Ms. Clark.
Ms. Carter. Present.
I heard you that time.
Mr. Kelly.
Present.
Mr. Coe.
Here.
Mr. Mack.
Here.
Mr. Robinson.
Here.
All present.
All right, now we can stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first of all, thanks for everyone coming this evening on this cold night. It's winter time in Chicago, right? All right, do we have anyone signed up to speak this evening?
No, nobody signed up.
Before you, you have the meeting minutes from November 4th, 2021. Please review them for any changes or corrections. Are there any changes to the meeting minutes as presented? Any discussion about previous meetings? It was a fun meeting. We can choose to relive it if you'd like to. No? Thematic reading, Ms. Clark?
Moving on.
All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from November 4th, 2021. I want it notated in the minutes that Linda Bassler should take. I have a first and a second. All right, any other questions or comments? No? Okay, please call the rule, Ms. Clark.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Paul Stiney.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Carter.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Question text six zero.
Okay, so I'm gonna call an audible to get things started, just to mess with Mr. Hedges. Uh, I'd like to.
He comes once a year. He can sit there for three hours later. Amen to that.
I'd like to entertain a motion that we, Mr. Sterrett, up to the very beginning, so that he doesn't have to sit here for three hours like the chief is suggesting.
Second.
Questions or comments? Do we need a roll call or is that enough? Can I roll call both, please?
Ms. Carter, aye. Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Paul Stiney, aye. Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Okay. All right, with that, I'm just gonna say that you're up.
All righty, thank you, everybody. My name is Dave Sterrett. I'm the street supervisor for the Village of Hampshire, and I was invited to come tonight to share some information on our snow and salt operations. So I'm starting with, every storm is different. Obviously, you know, we can, whether it's two inches, four inches of snow, air temp, road temp, wind, they all are a factor when it comes to removing snow. So, um, basically, our job is, when the snow falls, we push it off and salt the streets and away we go. But sometimes we can't do that. We gotta, um, every storm is different. So you could have two inches that lasts a day. You could have two inches that comes down in, you know, a half an hour or so. Um, every storm is different when we go out there. Uh, contact, uh, constant contact drivers. Um, two years ago, we installed radios in our trucks, um, before our way of contact was cell phones for the guys who'd have to pull over, and use their cell phones to contact each driver. Now we can all hear, everybody can hear each other. We know what's going. Guys can help each other out. The guy gets done early, um, he can help the guy that's, uh, behind. So it works out really well. Generally, try to keep stop intersections salted. Um, if it's snowing really hard, we won't salt our whole routes. It's kind of pointless. It will just cover back over. What we do try to do is, um, when we're plowing, we will salt intersections, hills, curves, uh, anything to, uh, make it safe. But like I said, if it's coming down hard and it's salt, it'll just cover right over and, uh, it's kind of a piece of money, so. Uh, typical, we have one to two inches of snow, uh, storm, uh, we'll solve both directions. So what we do is we'll, when we have to plow, we call it center lining. Um, we'll center line, uh, both ways on a, on a street, and then we'll come back and then we'll curb to push the snow to the curb because we can't reach, you know, center to the curb. And then our curving path, that's when we will salt. Obviously, the truck's going a little bit slower, so, um, we can get good coverage and, uh, so, um, one to two inches, we'll salt both directions. Uh, plowing priorities downtown, um, uh, the main roads, uh, curves, slopes. Again, if we're getting a heavy snowstorm, we'll concentrate on all our main roads, hills, curves. Um, so make sure those are open and safe and order us. Uh, salt purchasing, we use a state of Illinois. They have a program called CMS, which is Central Management Services. And basically what that is, everybody in the state of Illinois that wants to be part of this program, they try to figure out what they're gonna use for the year, and then, um, you send it into CMS, and then they take that out for bid for the, for every village, town, city in Illinois. Um, a contract order, uh, we usually get our contract, uh, around March, April, and that's when we gotta fill out the quantity we want for next coming winter season, which is kind of always a guess. But we've got it pretty much down to where we, uh, uh, use our allowance, so. Um, the 20%, uh, what we, every year, we'll sign up for an 80% to 120% of a contract. This gives us the leeway. If we do have an easier season or lighter season, we don't have to order the, uh, 100% of the contract. We can opt for the 8%. And then, of course, if we get more snow than we anticipated, we can, uh, then order 120% of our contract for the same price that, uh, we are rewarding. Uh, price per ton, it varies. Last year, we were paying $99.56 a ton. This year, $62.39. Um, I don't actually know how that works. I know it goes from previous years and fuels and mining and all that stuff. Um, it fluctuates. Uh, last year, we were paying 99. There's other places paying $115 a ton, um, kind of all over the board. But this year, price went down, uh, as you can see, close to, um, $37, so. Um, really good sign. Uh, trucks can use 45, 50 tons per run. So when we leave the yard fully loaded, we typically have 70 to 75 tons of salt, uh, on our trucks. We go out to, uh, start plowing. All the routes, they're not the same size, so we typically come back. Some guys have maybe a quarter load, some guys have a half load, some guys have larger routes, and they'll use up their whole load, so. But we usually run about 45, 50 tons per storm. Uh, total usage in one year, um, last year, we signed up for 2,500, or 25, yeah, 2,500 tons. And we, uh, had a pretty easy year last year, so we ended up going with 8% of the contract, which was, uh, 2,000 tons. This year, we backed it up from 2,500 tons to 2,000 tons at a 81/20, um, option. So we have, we have salt on hand, which is a good thing. Um, so we're ready to fight this winter season. Um, orders should arrive on trucks within seven business days. Um, if you turn to the next slide, you'll see, uh, um, we ordered 300 tons, uh, in Mar- or February 10th, and it didn't arrive till March 2nd. Uh, last year, of course, with COVID and carriers and workers and drivers and everything else, it was hard to, uh, um, you know, for them to find drivers to get salt to us. So it was a little stressful, uh, waiting, um, uh, from January, or I'm sorry, February 10th to March 2nd, finally receive the load, so. Um, and like I said, it was, there was a lot going on at that time, so. Under contract, you're supposed to have it within seven business days. If you order before 9:00 AM, that's considered, that day is considered the start of the business date. If you order after them, of course, it's, uh, nine, or seven days from then. Um, equipment, we have, uh, eight large plows and a pickup. Um, we have nine total routes, radios in each truck. Uh, the combination backhoe loader, um, is what we have to load salt. It has a yard and a half bucket, and it usually takes us about 45 minutes to fill every truck if they're completely empty. So it takes us quite a bit of time to, you know, get everybody rolling. Um, most of our fleet sits outside, and so we have to dump at night and then fill everything back up the next time we wanna go out, so. Uh, the salt bins, we've got two salt bins. You can see them on the picture. Um, they said we're ready to go. They hold about, they're about 700 to 800 tons. Um, so. Uh, next phase, routes manpower, uh, nine routes. We got five street employees and four of the utilities employees from water and sewer help us with our snow removal. Uh, mandatory breaks at certain points, typically overnight. Um, so if we came in and started plowing at 7:00, we went till, say, 10:00, 11:00 at night, and the guys, I give mandatory, uh, lunch and a dinner break to get them out of the trucks. If it's still snowing, I, you know, I gotta manage the snow removal, but I also have to manage the employees. It's very important for those guys healthy and, uh, giving them their breaks. Um, also, we typically, uh, break overnight. Um, I know we used to, uh, stay on our storm. If it's, say, we got three inches, we would keep going and going and going overnight into the wee hours of the morning. And then, you know, you have stuff that breaks, and then you're fixing it, and then you're stuck there all day. So I seen that the guys were getting pretty tired and beat up. So we typically break right around 10:00, 11:00 o'clock at night, come back, probably 4:00 in the morning, 5:00 in the morning. This gives them time away from the truck. Um, I also noticed that most other towns and counties and states are usually done for the night and then, you know, give them their guys a break, so. Uh, let's see what I have here. Uh, try to keep in the world by drilling, um, other activities, yeah, we'll usually bring in, guys will bring in, uh, hot pot chili or something. We've got a couple grills there, so try to get out of the trucks and, and gotta get our mines off of it and get something to eat. Um, you can see all the routes on there, one through, one through eight. You don't see nine, because nine is an alley route. It also calls parking lots and will help anybody that's behind. And then, um, other programs, uh, mailbox replacement. So typically, if, if the mailbox is, is installed correctly, which the face of it should be six to eight inches back from the curb, the plow will not hit the mailbox. We can't go and touch it. If it's too close, it might hit it with the whip or the edge of the plow. Uh, typically, it's the snow, uh, the heavy wet snow. When it rolls off the plow, it'll knock. It's probably the weakest structure in the whole yard is the mailbox. It's right next to your street. Um, but when we do allow, uh, up to $45, so homeowner calls, we'll go out, take a look at it, and, you know, nine times out of 10, it's, it's the snow, but we'll reimburse the homeowner, so they can get their mail. And we also have temporary boxes that we shove in buckets and will take out, but we wanna make sure, you know, the residents will get their mail. Uh, guidelines, that's, I just want to know that. Um, obviously, contact the street department if you have an issue with your mailbox. Uh, resident ride alongs, we encourage everybody to ride along with one of the drivers just to get an idea of what we do. So, um, it seems pretty easy, but it can, it's, uh, stressful sometimes, especially school buses and everybody else out there. Of course, you gotta be 80 years older, um, and the application is online.
I just, I, I wanted to thank you for coming in tonight. Um, Mr. Hedges, I remember talking about snow removal of some kind. I can't remember why we were even talking about it. And I thought that it would be a good idea if you came and introduced yourself to the board and kind of give the new trustees and even, you know, trustees that have been on the board for a while, uh, a refresher on some of our operations. We all read about stuff from time to time, and this kind of puts a, you know, fresh coat of paint on the walls, if you will, so that we understand how the operation is completed. So I really appreciate you.
You're welcome.
Do you guys have any questions for Mr. Sterrett at all?
I have a question.
Sure.
Okay, so we've approved a whole bunch of new housing developments. Um, so obviously, that's in the distant future, but how is that going to impact your need for more routes and trucks and things?
Um, we would definitely, we would have to, um, have more manpower or, and we're gonna have to add to our, our fleet, or we would have to hire it out till we, you know, handle some, so.
Granted, that's gradual over the years, but just think ahead. Like, how are we gonna manage it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just wanna say though, too, that, hey, we have, um, some really talented employees in the public works. Everybody's got, uh, talent with them, and they're really, uh, they have a great bunch of young guys, so, so, say it up.
Thank you for sharing. Thank you.
We have the most, like, one of the most dedicated public work crews that you'll ever see. You drive the roads in other communities as compared to ours in the wintertime, and ours are almost always curve to curve, unless for whatever reason we get 27 inches of snow and you can't push the snow back anywhere. You know, I mean, they, curve to curve is a big thing, and it's a big priority for our community. For some reason or another, people will expect it, and you go, and you go to, and you go to other communities, and it's not even close. So you guys are cool. Thank you. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
All right, you're dismissed, I guess. Unless you wanna stay.
Um.
You don't have the end of that.
Go on, Dave. Oh, yeah, it's ready. Well, Mr. Mayor, with that, uh, we would ask for a motion to approve the annual financial report for the fiscal year ended April 30, 2021. Um, and I'll introduce, uh, Finance Director Lyons, and she'll introduce our part.
So I would like to introduce you to Monica Damski. She is the audit manager on our job. Wave, Monica, so we can, yep, there's Monica. She's just gonna go through the highlights of the audits, um, and then she will entertain the questions that you had at the end of the presentation. All right, over to you, Monica.
All right. Good evening, everybody. As Lori mentioned, my name is Monica Damski, and I'm the audit manager for the Village's financial statement audit. Uh, this evening, I'm just gonna walk you through three pieces of required communication that we've published in relation to the April 30th, 2021 audit. Um, first and foremost, I wanted to say thank you to the board for having me today, and also, I wanted to thank Lori and the entire finance team. The audit process does require a great deal of time outside of their regular scope of their day-to-day functions. Um, so as the auditors, we are very appreciative for all the extra efforts that are put forth to making all of our work papers, and then, you know, uh, providing us with all of our requests, selections. It's a lot of work. So I'm pleased to report that we had seamless lines of communication, and Lori ensured that we had everything we needed in a timely manner to get through. Um, we're only out there for a week, so it's a lot that happened. So just wanted to thank you for that. I'll start off with the SAS 114 letter. That's gonna be one of the required pieces of communication that we had to provide to you. Um, the primary purpose of this letter is to convey whether we had any disagreements or difficulties with management during the course of the audit. So I'm happy to report, we did not have any disagreements or difficulties, and that's exactly what you'll find in the body of that letter. Next, I'll turn to the actual annual financial report. Um, on page two and three of the report is the independent auditor's report. Uh, this letter states that, um, it's management's responsibility to prepare the financial statements, and then it's our responsibility as the auditors to generate an opinion. Um, this year, the village did receive an unmodified opinion. This is the cleanest form of opinion and the highest level, level of assurance that we as auditors can issue. That ultimately, that means that the financial statements are free of material misstatements, and we did not come across any internal control issues during the process. Following that, on page four through 14, this starts your management discussion and analysis. Overall, this is just a great narrative summary of the fiscal year's financial statement highlights. We understand that the financial statements can be quite difficult to comprehend, so this section breaks it down nicely. Um, with words, charts, and graphs, so if there's anything, we encourage the board to read out of this whole report. It's always the M D N A. It'll give you a great highlight of everything that happened within the year. Next, on pages 20 to 23, this is gonna be your fund level income statement for the governmental fund. So ultimately, this is what the village budgets for on an annual basis. About halfway down the page, on 22, on the left-hand side, you'll see it says excess or deficiencies of revenues over or under expenditures. So if you go across, ultimately, what that means is this is your operating income for the respective fund within the year. So you'll see the general fund had excess of revenues of $216,000. And at the bottom, you'll see your change in fund balance from last year to this year. And so for the general fund, again, your ending balance is gonna be about $1.8 million. And then that's gonna go across to the next page to 23. So for capital projects, you'll see $203,000 of, um, revenues over expenditures with an ending balance of 1 point, 1.0 million, 1.1 if we wanna round up. Any questions thus far? Okay, if you wanted to turn just a few pages to 27, I'll bring up the, kind of, the same report. This is gonna be for your proprietary fund, so your water, sewer, and your garbage. Again, if you wanted to look at halfway down the page, it says operating income or loss. Water sewer had just a slight loss of about $200,000 with a very healthy fund balance at the bottom of $47 million. I'm gonna turn one more page, 29 through 30. Here's just some pension information. On page 30, you'll see that the village did contribute about, um, $300,000 to the police pension fund, which later on in the report, you'll see that that's about $4,600, $4,700 above the acquired, the required contribution from the actuary this year. Any number questions for me? Okay, so following these numbers are the notes to the financial statements. In this back section, you'll find investment information for both the village and pension fund. There'll be a little bit more detail on your capital assets and long-term debt, as well of, as well as I M R F information. And then towards the back of the report in the required supplementary information, you'll see budget to actual reports. Again, so then you'll see your actual revenues that came in and your expenses versus what was budgeted for in the fiscal year. And then also, there's 10 years of historical information. All right, and lastly is the manag- management letter. In the current year, there were no new recommendations. Um, actually, let me just start with, to tell you, the management letter. Ultimately, the purpose of this is to convey any internal control recommendations that we found within the fiscal year, any best practices that we see in the industry, or any upcoming Gatsby pronouncements. So that's the current year recommendation, and it's just pretty much an FYI because this isn't necessarily, um, it's not, doesn't have to be implemented until April of 2023. And this is gonna be a Gatsby about leases. As we get it more information and the Gatsby comes out with more, um, we'll definitely work hand in hand with Lori to see if this is material enough to even get implemented for the village. Um, and then in the back, after that, you'll see prior year recommendations. Uh, we did, uh, we were able to implement several of these. Um, just a few had to be repeated, which is funds over budget, for example, uh, funds with deficit fund balance, and then commingled cash, which Lori and I talked about today, and we're kind of gonna go over that for the upcoming audit.
Do you expound on the commingled cash part of it for the balances?
Yeah, so ultimately, what that one is, is there, in a perfect world, again, this is something we see all the time. Um, you, we don't want to have negative cash in the funds. We know that ultimately, they do not, they do not positive. Um, however, it's standard to not have any being negative across any funds. Um, again, that's a perfect world. This is across the board, especially, especially in this past year with COVID stuff. Um, so that, that, that's just ultimately what that one is. Ultimately, we wanna see no funds have a negative. So if you can transfer the funds at the end of the year just to make it positive. Um, but again, with this year, how everything happened, it's kind of been standard across the board, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hey, do we have any other questions? Or anything you'd like to add, Ms. Line?
Um, I just wanna tell you that, um, I feel like our, uh, partnership with Lauterbach and Amen has been really great over the years. And, um, not only do they provide, you know, the audit for us, but they're a huge support to, um, the finance team, if you will. And, um, I, uh, can always kind of, I make a quick phone call and get a really good answer. And, um, they provide fantastic training sessions throughout the year as well that really help us implement some of these new GSPs and things that come along, so.
Somebody explain what GSP is.
Uh, GSP is, um, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, and they, they set the, um, the standards. So there are some unusual things with, um, with governmental accounting and very unusual compared to help, uh, private sector accounting. And so, um, you know, somebody that comes out of school with a, you know, an accounting degree really needs some help um, because there are just so many unique things that you have to be cognizant of, so.
GSP is the government version of cap.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, the, your work in the finance department, your whole team. Thank you for joining us tonight, uh, Ms. Monica, and with that.
President Reed, I do have one question. This is trustee Kelly. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I do have one question, and Monica, this could, this is probably for you. In reading through the audit, just to make sure I'm clear on the summary level, and I believe it was one of the earlier pages, the full financial statement, not looking at the fund level, but looking at the full financial statement, is it the opinion of the auditors that, and, and am I reading this correctly, that our revenue, uh, was higher than budgeted, our outlay was under budget? Uh, and if so, in your opinion, are our fund balances healthy for the Village of Hampshire?
Yeah, um, what, was there a page number that you were looking at specifically?
Yeah, let me go back to it. It's one of the... Sorry, going through like a 300-page packet here. Page seven, government-wide. Page seven, the... Oh, no, I'm sorry, page eight, when we're looking at general revenues and then expenses. So we look at things like sales and use taxes. It looks like we received 867,000, almost 868,000 in 2020, and then 974,820, 21. So am I reading it correctly that we received over 111 or close to $110,000 more in sales and use taxes in 2021 than in 2020?
Correct.
And then, that being said, in looking at the fund level, is it the opinion of the auditing firm that our funds are healthy for where government funds should be as a percentage of expenditures?
Yes, um, we didn't, we usually look at that. We have a fund balance work paper, and we didn't have it noted as it's not. I did not calculate, you know, how many months of expenditures you have here, and I can send that to Lori after the meeting. I did not calculate, you know, how many months of expenditures you have here, and I can send that to Lori after the meeting. But during our testing, we did not. Come across that it wasn't healthy. So yes, I would agree that you do have a healthy fund balance at year end.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else have any other questions? Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the annual financial report for the fiscal year ending on April 30th, 2021. So. Last chance for questions.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Fodor. Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Paul Streney.
Hi.
We should pass.
Thank you. And we are.
Thanks again for having me. Have a good night.
Thank you, Monica.
Thank you all for being so patient with us when we get caught up and officially caught up on our audits for the first time in a long time. So thank you, Lori, for all your hard work. With that, Mr. Mayor, we would ask for consideration of a resolution authorizing the approval. And execution of a third amended and restated development agreement for the property identified as the southerly acres of Tuscan Wood subdivision unit two in the village. And Mr. Schuster, who's been working with the attorneys over here and the principals, will give you a brief introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Hedges. This property goes back in the village to 2004 at least. And that's a time when the owner was proposing to sell it to pass criminality. Entities for development. It suffered through the 2008, 2012 times. It was an amendment in 2014, another amendment to the development agreement in 2018, and it's present. The unit one, which is between Jake Lane and Route 72 is finished. So Ryland, which became, or CalAtlantic, which became Lamar, is sold out, all the lots there. And so we have remaining the area north of Jake Lane and to the east by the water tower. And there was always a part of this land south of Route 72. It's that yellow box right over Mr. Crandall's head. That was always part of this ownership. And it's taken on a life of its own. And now the successors to the past Quinelli folks are selling that 40-acre parcel to. Rocky 72. You've met Christine and Peter last meeting. They made a presentation to you about what they hope to do down there. In the course of that, it was. Determined that the development agreement that. Governs all of unit two, including that 40-acre piece that's the outlier south of 72. Ought to be split again. So that each party, they're going to be a little different, and they each want to be clear about what their obligations are going to be. So we took the original agreement that had a, at that point, a 17-year life. With some minor tweaks over the years. And, and split it off. And you'll see if, in these two documents between the south and the north, many of the provisions are the same. Because owners building roads have to follow the same standards and doing grading, follow the same standards and things like that. The two features that. Are really different. Is that the south 40 acres is going to pick up and pay recaptures that are due to Crown. When you see Hampshire East and Hampshire West, those are Crown companies. Because Crown put some money into the sewer line and the wastewater treatment facility. That benefited this property. And between these two parties, their negotiation over the sale transaction was that the south. Owner, Rocky 72, will take care of that recapture obligation. So we had to designate that as solely a southerly obligation. There's going to be a release from Crown. For the northerly part, and, and that was addressed in these two documents. The other thing is, there are obligations that were never fulfilled yet for the Ramke. Route 72 intersection. There's, there's one more turn lane. If you're coming towards the village and going to head south. There's not a turn lane that was ever constructed yet. That will be added in by Ramke 72. And the village had also. Asked years ago that the portion of Ramke Road along that 40 acres get repaved. Fixed up a little bit. Brought up to a better standard, and, and they'll also do that. And, and that's no impact on the property in the north, so that's going to sign to the property to the south. All the rest of it is really just. Minor items. Many of, because Rocky 72 hasn't really presented you with a, a development plan. You'll see many paragraphs have been omitted because we can't talk about their signs or their buildings or. Some of those details that the people on the north wanted to lock down for the northerly residential areas. The south is going to be potentially some commercial. And, and multifamily residential, not single-family residential. So those differences are called out. So there are long documents because there's a lot of things that have to just stay in the standard clauses, but those are the. Those couple of things are the highlight of what's changing in this document or these two documents. But then each of them will have a standalone agreement identifying them as the owner that's going to have the responsibilities.
Do you have anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Hedges?
I don't think so. You've all been briefed, I think, over the last couple of months with all the details, so. We've been looking forward to this for a long time, and it's finally here. Appreciate your consideration.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, you have any questions?
Mr. President, I'm sorry, I neglected. Mr. Jonathan Caiman is here for the northerly acres. From the firm of Zankow in Crystal Lake, and Mr. Craig Crandall is here representing Ramke 72. Mr. Bernie, who does most of the work for the northerly acres people, is teaching his class tonight, in fact, administering an examination. So he apologizes he couldn't be here. Some of you have met him before. He's, he's from time to time stood up for the Hampshire Property LLC people, but Mr. Caiman is here. They're, they're both working on the sale transaction. This is an integral piece to allowing them to finish that off. And I think we're still, you're still aiming for the end of November.
Yeah, currently scheduled for Monday, actually. We have a time set, so.
So they're hoping to get this approval tonight, put the rest of all their documents into a closing escrow, and, and bring this thing to a conclusion.
Only thing I would add, Mr. Mayor, just, which is clear, I think the first motion is just, the first article is to. Address the northern southerly property, and the second motion will be the northern property. So two different ones.
Ms. Paul Streeny, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I actually have two, one for the northern, one for the south. The one for the south, it just had to do with the, the changes in the road or the updates in the road and stuff. You said it was a, a turn in, a left hand. It sounded like a left-hand turn in going south, and that's on 72, and I didn't.
Westbound turning south.
It's a westbound turning south, okay.
Towards the village and want to make a southbound turn onto Ramke. There will be a turn lane for you.
Okay.
It's not there yet, but it's going to be there.
That's going to be the responsibility of Ramke?
Yes.
How does that work? Because, I mean, it's, it's a state highway, so they let us come in and do that?
Yeah, so I'll address this one.
On the other.
This is, this is pretty typical in all of our developments. When any road improvements are required for a development, the developer is responsible, actually, the developer or the village is responsible. In most cases, the developer. And yes, the state will require that the developer make those improvements.
Okay, so I have to do.
It's been on the prelim, it's been on the preliminary plan for the overall development. Since the beginning, so there'll, there'll be some I-DOT approvals that will have to be obtained, but it's, it's been planned for 17 years.
But there's nothing then to go coming west and heading south, and so that left-hand turn across the lane, that's. That would have to be an I-DOT to do a left-hand direct.
Which way do you mean?
If you're heading west and you, and you're approaching Ramke Road, and you want to make a left to go south.
I thought you said going.
That's already there. It is a left-hand turn, okay. It's already there. I'm thinking going right in, and that's what I thought we were talking about, that I was sitting in the left hand, too. Thank you for that. My other one then is the, the 20 years to, to act on the, the, the northerly end. To develop it, is, I mean, is it going to be sitting there vacant for 20 years? Because they have 20 years, or?
Two-part answer. First is, you certainly hope not, but. None of us control what Hampshire Property is able to do. They are not builders. They would be selling to builders. Much like Crown does that you've heard about. You know, they would hope to get started on something much sooner. The second part of that answer is, since the draft that you've seen, the parties have agreed that. To, to scale back that 20 years to the 20 years from the 2018 agreement. So the end date will be November of 2038. Not a big difference, but a, a little bit. Less time that these agreements will be in effect. But I'm sure if you ask the parties, they would hope to be totally done within that timeframe.
Then, just as a newbie, just to follow all this up, because obviously this stuff has been going on for a very long time, and some of us are newer. The plan of subdivision then, I mean, you know, you're reading through the agreements, it's very, you know, very thorough of what goes in and how the roads and everything else. But there is a plan of subdivision that was from the early 2000s that came out of this. So there, that's what the builder would have to follow that.
There's a preliminary development plan. For all, all the property. I think you should expect that on the south, the Ramke 72 parcel, the 40-acre south of 72, there would be a, a new plan altogether. But on the north side, they, at this point, they're not proposing to change. Makes any major changes to the preliminary development plan that was approved years ago.
So that's both single-family and townhouses?
Yes.
It's just single-family on the north side.
And duplex?
There's some.
There's some elderly family.
And we did, Christine, we did have an inquiry just last week from the northerly property, from their engineering firm, some questions, so they may, they may have something to introduce.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you for pulling all that together from me.
Anyone else have any other questions about this?
I, I have a question, and this is either for Mr. Hedges or Mr. Schuster. In the agreement that pertains to the south agreement on page six. Subsections E and F, where it's talking about recapture of sanitary sewer costs. In here, it says that the recapture payments made to and collected by the village pursuant to said amendment to the first sewer expansion agreement shall be paid over to Hampshire Properties LLC or its assigns. Who's paying the village? Where's the village collecting this money from? The 1.3 million that would then be paid over to Hampshire Property LLC?
The agreement identifies areas generally east of this development that we are benefited by. The Hampshire Creek Interceptor Sewer and the Wastewater Treatment Expansion Project. So those owners would be paying. To the village for reimbursement over to Hampshire Property.
It's a connection fee paid permanently.
Right, so it's, it's the connection fees that are paid by those owners at time of building permit. They then, or actually, it's probably a payment due at plating, time of plating subdivision. Is, it's when the village then collects the money and pays it over. To the, to the party that paid it out at Hampshire Property.
Trustee Kelly, the answer is that the developer and eventually the home, the buyers of the homes will pay those fees to the village, and then we pay them over to the northerly property.
Did that answer your question?
It did. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution 21-13. Authorizing the approval and execution of a third amended restated development agreement for the property identified as southerly acres. Of the Tuscan Wood subdivision unit two in the village.
I'll make your motion.
Any other questions? Ms. Kirk, can you call the roll?
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Fodor.
Hi.
Ms. Paul Streney.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
As these were discussed together, I don't anticipate there being many questions about the second resolution, but are there any? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to approve Resolutions 21, 14. Resolution authorizing the approval and execution of a third amended and restated development agreement for the property identified as the northerly acres of Tuscan Wood subdivision unit two in the village. Any other questions? Ms. Kirk, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. Matt. Ms. Paul Streney.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Fodor.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
I thank everyone for their patience in this long, arduous process, as I shared in our last board meeting. One of the first meetings I had after I won the election was to meet Peter and Christina. I don't know why in the heck you guys stayed in it as long as you did, because I was walking with this crazy municipal deal went. But I'm very happy that you guys are now one step closer. So thank you for taking it in us, because we believe in you.
We were hosted very well.
It's been a pleasure working with them both. With that, Mr. Mayor, we would ask for a motion to approve a professional services agreement. With EBI for lead service line replacement inventory in the amount of $19,676. We had this discussion at the last board meeting. You might recall, and Mr. Mayor, we would ask that it be a little more thorough in our follow-up. Residents who did not reply to the electronic survey. And so they have added some additional steps in that. We've added postcards and asked that. Call Village Hall, call public courts if you'd like a employee to come out. So I think with that, Mr. Mayor, you've seen the changes, and we would ask your consideration is agreed.
As we talked about in the last board meeting, it's not just Amanda them sending out the survey and that kind of information for the $20,000, there's much more that comes along with it with the database and that kind of stuff. And my biggest concern was somebody getting lost in the cracks and might not understand how to complete the survey, and it just causes an issue. So. I think that the changes that were made addresses the concerns that I had had and some of the concerns that the board had along those lines. Do you guys feel comfortable moving forward with that?
Okay, because I still, I mean, I'm looking at it going, the third or fourth round of postcards is then where we're going to be pulling in those seniors. If, if there's nothing on that card, even in small print that says, you know, moving, you know, that there will be additional opportunities for other ways.
Earlier postcards? Sure, we can.
Just so it says it on there, because if, you know, I'm an older person and don't have the QR code, I'm feeling like I'm behind the eight ball. But if it says something on there, that there will be additional opportunities other than the QR code to do this. At least it gives them an opportunity, like they're included. My dad would throw it away, you know? Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? And I will entertain a motion to approve, Mr. Kelly, did you click? I'm not hearing a thing. I'm hearing a thing. Don't get me wrong. I, I will entertain a motion to approve a professional service agreement with EBI for lead service line replacement inventory in the amount of $19,606. So. Any other questions?
Ms. Paul Streney.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Fodor.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
All right.
We should pass 6-0.
Thank you.
Mr. President, before you walk, can I make one comment?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I just want to, because this is, this whole lead pipe thing is really kind of throwing me for a loop as to how much it's going to cost everybody and and people are, really have no idea that it's coming. But I did have an opportunity at an event the other day to question three senators about it and to get some additional information from them. And they did explain that there are going to be art funds, there will be money in there. They were honest, though, and they said that the bulk of that money is going to go to Chicago, and that's how it's planned, to go to Chicago. And then the municipalities such as ours are going to have to be fighting tooth and nail to get a little piece of good luck pie. So we might want to get ahead of that as much as we can. I mean, even everything that we read said it was focused on Chicago, the pipes there, but I just don't want this community, we get lost in it. And so I made it very clear to the three senators I talked to that we do, we need the money for this, and this is a huge unfunded mandate, so. Somebody did tell me, well, as long as you don't touch the pipes, they're okay. You know, it's once you disturb them is when you start to get the lead and, you know, we understand.
That's not, that's not how the law is written. It's not, it doesn't say don't touch your pipes, it says go find them and see what they are, and if you find it, then you're in trouble.
And that was the irritation that they set about having to touch it, and that if you didn't, you'd be okay, but they understand it's public safety and it's, and they all agree, all the senators do. But those parks funds, I mean, that's going to be.
I thought I heard the president say the other day that every lead pipe in America would be replaced.
Yes, he did, but he says a lot of things.
But I just want to share that and at least make it known that I can speak to our.
We're used to scrapping for our funds, and we expect to have to scrap these too. What we're hearing is that they'll probably go to IAPA, it can be administered through their low-interest loan program, which includes a forgiveness component, and that forgiveness component is typically based on a need, on average income, and we don't qualify very well for it. So in this case, it may be different, there aren't any rules yet, so we'll see.
And it's individual homeowners that we got with this one.
Well, this, yeah, I was reading an article yesterday, Arlington Heights up north, they just finished all their lead pipe replacements.
Montgomery.
Montgomery, that's where it's at. And they actually, they paid for the residence side also. And it's unclear yet how that will happen, more likely that residents will have to pay for their own side.
And it's, it is absolutely, it's hard for us to get money to do things that we want to do, not things that we have to do. I mean, we fight with Naperville, we fight with St. Charles, we fight with Elton, we fight, you know what I mean? It's right in the same county. You know, it's difficult, and Jay does a heck of a job trying to find the money, and Josh does it as well. And so, you know.
We have tied out, sitting on our money, making money off of it.
Oh, you didn't bring that down. I did, because it's not right.
Yeah. Yep.
So with that, I mean, I appreciate your comments, but holy cow, we have to figure this out, right?
Exactly.
Okay, Mr. Hedges. With that, we would ask for your consideration of a resolution approving a final plat, excuse me, final development plan and plan of subdivision for Oakstead Neighborhood School area, the Oakstead Development in the village. This is actually obviously formality, because the building is just about finished. Now, but this is the final plat, this has now been signed and filed.
Mr. Marak is here, if there's any questions as it pertains to the plan commission, as there was a meeting to discuss just not so long ago. I would ask that if you have any questions about that, let's talk about it now, group the resolution and ordinance together as part of this discussion, because one relates to the other. Does anyone have any questions about the resolution or the ordinance?
I have a question for you on the final plan of subdivision for the Oakstead Neighborhood. It does say middle school?
Yeah.
That's an error.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that would be corrected.
No, I don't, we don't, it doesn't matter to us what it says.
Right.
As long as the land is right, so they've got the milars here, so if we prove it outside the milar, and it'll just say middle school for eternity until somebody's correct. Because, you know, because regardless of what that says, I mean, the path for the high school or the middle school in town says high school.
Right.
You hear what I'm saying?
But that's because of how it was built.
Right, but it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't matter for the use of the building, that's up to the owner. I mean, we could, we could hope to change it, or we could say it's changing, but at the same time, it was going to cause all kinds of trouble.
All I'm saying is, clearly that's a mistake.
Actually, that's what the owner is calling it, and that's all we can say, that's what they'll call it when they file the plat.
And who is the owner of this?
The school.
So maybe they know something we don't. No, I wouldn't reach into fire to do it, I'm sure somebody just.
Yeah, they were made of work.
Any other questions about the middle school plat? No? Okay, then I will entertain Resolutions 21, Resolution 21-15, Resolution approving the final development plat, plat of subdivision for Oakstead Neighborhood School area, the Oakstead Development. I'm not a motion. I have a first.
Second.
I have a second. Do they have any other questions? That's pretty lengthy. Are there concerns? Moving on. Okay, Ms. Kirk, can you call the rolls?
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Fodor.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Paul Steny.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson, six zero.
Mr. Mayor, we would ask for your consideration of an ordinance amending the village code, Chapter 6 zoning regulations to add regulations governing a new zoning district, recreational zoning district in the village. And you recall that this was on the agenda for the last meeting, but the document was not in your packet, so we included it in your packet this time. And just to remind you that we have various recreational features around the village, uses in various zoning districts around the village, but not one zoning district where you can do a lot of recreational events. Josh has been working with the Pride Hill Ventures people who have talked about a lot of recreational uses, and have come up with this recreational category that will be available to anybody coming in the village, but the area that we're focused on right now is near Pride Hill. You have any further questions, Josh, if you have any?
Any questions about the proposed ordinance?
I have just a few clarification, how is a cemetery part of recreational? I just don't understand it, I'm not complaining, I just want to understand that better.
That actually stems from the planning zoning meeting on that topic. In reviewing recreational zoning, a few of the other towns, townships nationwide, they have included as a conservatorship zoning, so forest-preserved cemeteries would fall under that. And we did also discuss dog parks, just to kind of get that in there at the very last minute, because we could have a dog park running in as a pretty good park. That would just kind of add it in there, because cemeteries also fall in a similar area of recreation. It has to be a special use, whether it's industrial, commercial, even though we don't really have cemeteries in the village, might as well.
Here we do.
Within village limits?
Yes. Oh, yeah. Right there on Harmony Road, by Third Ridge.
Oh, no, that's not Third Ridge, the one that's in the village is the Catholic.
Oh, the Catholic one, right down, yes. I thought that, I thought that the one around Third Ridge is ours.
No, they pay us a buck, they're supposed to be paying us a buck a year to patrol it. I was mistaken on that.
You ever get that down?
I never have. At least in this case, it accounted for, instead of any possible future cemeteries requiring slightly used variances.
Okay.
Sort of a passive open space.
So what is this for? I don't get it, somebody explain it to me, I'm missing it.
Why we're creating this district?
Yeah, where is the district at?
It's just a zoning district, Trustee Kell, so like any other district, it could be industrial, residential, in our case.
Okay. It's just, it's a classification. It's not, it's not something that exists on paper yet, this is just allowing the use to happen within the village. And on the analysis, these are the things that are going to be allowed?
Correct.
So if I can clarify the analysis, those are things that are already somewhere in our zoning code? I get that they're just in pieces across other districts, so this would cohesively put a lot of things in one district, and you can see all of the regulations in the packet there, I think it's right after the ordinance. You know, there's a list of everything that's included.
So in order to have these types of venues in the village, at the current time, they had to apply for special use within other zoning districts, because we didn't have one where, for example, you bend up with an amusement park in an industrial area by the code.
So, yeah, this would streamline the process in a lot of cases, and it also include a lot of other types of recreation that were not included in our current code.
So if somebody wanted to open up a community center, they could purchase a piece of land, and then they could be zoned as a recreational classification within our zoning code, and then be allowed to do these things.
Correct.
So am I understanding you correctly that instead of coming up and asking for a variance, they would simply ask us to change the zoning to recreational?
Yes, so this is not actually zoning any land in the village as recreational, so the first time this happens for every property, it's going to have to come through the plan commission and the village board. And then in the comprehensive plan revision that happens sometime in the future, the village board could also decide that they want to plan certain areas to be recreational with this tool.
And the zoning classification will be more representative of what is actually being done.
Correct.
Thank you, you summarized that very well. Is that how this is? Yes, it does, thank you so much. Any other questions about the zoning classification?
Yeah, in the, in that list that Trustee Fodor was mentioning cemeteries in, there's also under special uses, solar energy systems and wind energy systems. How are solar energy or wind energy considered recreational?
I think that falls under, well, I could ask Mr. Marak, but I think that under the same thought process of cemetery being more of a path of, what was the terminology that you used, path of conservative?
Conservative.
Conservative space?
Yeah, Mr. Marak referred to.
Conservation.
Conservative areas.
So like you're not disturbing, you know, you're theoretically in a solar field, going to have grass and that kind of stuff, and it's like conserving the land, if you will, not building buildings on it? Maybe, is that the logic?
Yeah.
Okay. Does that help, Mr. Kelly?
Yeah. Yes.
I don't think solar and wind should be in there.
So I put that in there from the beginning, because it's included in all of the other districts in the village, except for residential, at some point the village board, I can't remember when it happened, the village board decided to add wind and solar energy systems as special uses across all the districts in the village. So I just, I just kept that consistency here, of course, you could decide to take it out if you want.
2016, 17, we did that? When it was a big hot-button topic, we decided that we wanted to allow it across all our zoning districts, so that even in an industrial park, if somebody wanted to put them, because there was a user in the area, not within the village, that had some land next to their factory, and then they wanted to put up, not windmills, it was solar panels on the ground and stuff, and they had to fight pretty hard with the city to do it. And so we thought we'd cut it off and make it easy for people to be having green energy within the village.
Didn't Mineral Act do that?
They did.
They put a solar panel, a radius, or something, to build it.
Yeah, that was after we did this.
Yes.
Okay, so that's more helpful, that those two provisions exist in every zoning district in the village?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And one we just also added, obviously, a lot of zoning districts, other things are permitted, but just the primary zoning categories.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? I will entertain Ordinance 21-45, an ordinance amending the village code, Chapter 6 zoning regulations to add regulations governing a new zoning district, recreational zoning district in the village. First and second, questions of comments? Ms. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Paul Steny.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Fodor.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson, six zero.
Now for the next topic?
At this point, Ms. Lyons is going to give us a presentation about special service area, special service area levy and pine maintenance. We had a similar discussion last year, I think she's going to give you a little more detail this year.
So we have a lot of momentum, things are moving along really well, and I was going to bring it to a screeching halt. So, first of all, just to reference the agenda supplement, I wanted to kind of just explain a little bit about our different SSAs, just really, really quickly. We have three different types of SSAs, and there's actually a couple of subcategories, if you will. But we have the special service areas that were initiated by the village for infrastructure on behalf of specific subdivision improvements, that would include, we have them currently for Tuscany Woods and Lakewood subdivisions. Then we have what we call maintenance SSAs, which we're going to talk about this evening, which are either for detention purposes, sometimes it includes mowing, those types of things, and there are subcategories there. Those that the village owned that we call maintenance SSAs, and those that are privately owned that we call backup SSAs, and either they would include things like Lakewood subdivision that's technically a backup SSA, because Lakewood Homeowners Association owns that property, and other entities such as Hampshire Corporate Center and Stanley, and we just voted on one of those, or you voted on one of those last meeting to get that in the works. So I provided a list of all twenty-nine, we're up to number twenty-nine, as far as SSA, some are active, some are inactive, some have been dissolved, so just to kind of let you know where we're at. Then to go to what we're discussing this evening, which are the maintenance SSAs, and also those that we actually levy for and those that are backups. So I'd like to start out with a couple that will go along pretty easily, and then we'll come to a big neighbors level. So the first SSA that I'd like to discuss is SSA number two, which is in Old Mill Manor. So as you can see, both in your packet and on the screen, I apologize, these are really tiny, but I did my best to kind of blow things up, because that's my ability. We're currently in fiscal year 22, so we have some results with respect to wages and expenses that have been allocated to this SSA. However, this spring, it's possible also that we will be mowing before May 1st, so there may be some additional, some additional expenses. So what we do is we levy for the maintenance that's being done this fiscal year, and we'll collect it next year. So with that in mind, you have to keep in mind that we like to have a little fund balance in our account in each of the SSAs, so that the village isn't advancing, if you will, on maintenance that's being done. So this year, we levied twenty-six hundred dollars and actually expect to collect twenty-six hundred and ten cents, that's just because of the county's rounding. So we propose a five percent increase to total twenty-seven hundred and thirty dollars. And this particular one is pretty straightforward, there aren't big ton drawings or anything like that, so you can kind of just see the trends of the levies, assuming a five percent increase across the board, then a little bit in wage increases and those types of things because of hourly rates that are mandated by the state. We do pay for two individuals to operate the SSAs in the summertime. One is usually a college student, and the second person, their wages are actually split between the street department and the SSAs. We used to have two hired college students to do that, and it became, not that their work ethic wasn't good, but they really required a direct supervisor, so that's why we actually have one of our street department personnel work directly with the SSA worker that's the college student. So when we're levying for these things, if it's five percent or less, we do not have to have a public hearing, and so this is just an introduction to what I will propose at the next meeting, which is an ordinance for the twenty-seven hundred and thirty dollars. So that kind of gives you an overall view of SSA number two, and kind of some of the generalities that we'll talk about with respect to all of the SSAs. What I've done down at the very bottom of the page, I've taken, just for reference, there might not be a. just for reference, there might not be a, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar fair market value home in each one of these SSAs, but it's just kind of a point of reference as to what the levy in the dollar amount that's quoted will cost, um, these particular homeowners if they had a twenty-five-thousand-dollar home with a fair market value. And just to let you know, um, SSA number two, Old Mill Manor, has a hundred and ninety-four different properties in there, so that twenty-seven hundred dollars is shared amongst a hundred and ninety-two, um, property owners. Any questions for this one at all?
Yes, this is trustee Kelly.
Yes.
Uh, the five percent proposed increase results in a fund balance increase of forty-two percent. Why are we increasing the SSA or proposing an increase at all when the fund balance is as healthy as it shows here?
Uh, well, it's, it's projected fund balance of about fourteen hundred dollars. And so, um, yes, uh, we spent, um, in excess of that this year, and as I said, there's the springtime, I don't know if we're gonna mow one time or we're gonna mow four times, I don't really know what's going to happen, so yes, the fund balance is going up, but I, um, to hold two thousand dollars, you know, from a hundred and ninety-four property owners, I don't think is, is, um, excessive.
No, I'm sorry, my question is why are we in, I, I'm not saying the fund balance shouldn't exist, I'm saying why are we increasing or, or asking for a higher levy rather than a levy to cover what just the cost is or to keep it flat? Why are we seeing a need to increase by five percent?
Um.
When the fund balance shows that we will actually continue to grow at a significant rate?
Yes.
In smaller dollars, I get it's only two thousand, but it grows the fund balance, estimated fund balance in that year?
Certainly, yes. I, I think if we get to, you know, like, at some point, um, I won't recommend the five percent, that was just to show how it would grow, assuming that, um, you know, things kind of stay the same. If, if something were to, I don't know, if we have a drought, let's say, we won't need to, um, increase next year, maybe it'll, um, we don't ever want to really drop down to zero, um, because then that makes it difficult for residents to say, well, I had zero this year, and now next year I have, you know, twenty-five dollars or whatever it is. So we don't like to go to zero, but, um, honestly, we don't know what's gonna happen between now and the end of the year, which is our measurement point, we always measure on the fiscal year, and that's not something I drive, that was done like right from the get-go. Um, but I don't, if, if you don't want to raise it five percent, if you wanted, we could leave it flat, um.
Trying to anticipate expenses.
Yeah, I'm trying to anticipate expenses, and I really don't know what's gonna happen, so. Try to keep it reasonable.
Okay, thank you.
I think maybe one of the future SSAs might explain why when bad things happen, it's really nice to have something in there so that we don't have to increase a lot, so.
That's why you're proud?
Maybe.
Okay, yeah, just kind of looking at the future. Or looking in the past.
Okay, if there's no questions on this, uh, again, this is just an introduction of the SSAs this evening. Um, if you have questions or want me to adjust, yes?
Can you tell me why White Oak Ponds is going up fifty percent?
Yep.
When, when no work spent out? Just for that.
Okay, so, um, let, let's, um, we're gonna take one at a time?
Oh, okay.
Yep, so we're on the, uh, SSA number two. Any further questions for that? I'm sorry, like I said, this is gonna be a logjam, so I'm gonna try to keep it.
Hey, I did everything I could.
Alright, so our next one is SSA number three. Um, this is, uh, homes that, seventeen homes that are in the Panama Street area. Um, we're dropping the levy down for, uh, this year, we have, uh, in, this is a case, Mr. Kelly, where we had a significant fund balance, and so, um, we've dropped it down the last couple of years, we're down fifty percent to a three-hundred-dollar levy. Um, we did have a lot of mowing in that, uh, area this year, so, um, we did use more than three hundred dollars, but, um, you know, we levy what we think, so I'm, I'm recommending a three percent increase for this particular one to three-hundred-and-ten dollars, um, which will still leave us a fund balance of thirty-two hundred dollars. Any questions on this one?
I think you're good, Ms. Lyons.
Alright, the next one we have is Hampshire Prairie, SSA number six. Um, this includes two-hundred-and-forty-nine different properties. Uh, this year's levy was down fifty percent from the prior year, um, sixty-two-hundred-and-twenty dollars, and I'm proposing to raise this one by five percent, keep our fund balance the same. Um, I, we can drop this down again, but, um, I just, i- if you notice the difference between fiscal year twenty-one and twenty-two, um, we are kind of whittling away at, uh, our balances, and so, um, I, I, I'd like to keep it on track like this, again, we will review it every single year, but I feel like a, um, five percent increase is okay.
Can, can, can you explain to us how, uh, we went from twelve-four to six-two?
We did that last year because, again, um, uh, the year before, uh, don't, oh, so the year before we did, um, Hampshire Prairie includes Maxwell Circle, Nicholas, that there are, what do you call those things? Islands, what do you call them, Bill?
You call them islands.
Okay, islands, that they were landscaped with bushes and, um, mulch and that kind of stuff, that is way more than we can care for. So we did have to increase the levy a few years ago, we took the landscaping out and planted grass there, so now it's just being mowed. Um, and so that was the reason for the decrease, is that work has been finished, and we were kind of re-pooping, if you will, to bring our fund balance back up, and then, um, so we were able to reduce it.
So, Ms. Lyons, with that state, with that being true, if we were, took out the landscaping and the mulch because of the added resources needed to maintain, what, eh, what's causing the wages to be doubled between FY twenty-one and FY twenty-three?
I think that that is, uh, so, we do a time study about every five years, ask the street department to actually determine what amount of time is being spent in each of the SSAs. And, um, so all of these things are allocated according to the time study, and again, I don't do this every year, I do it about every five years, um, but, uh, I believe that that is due to the amount of rainfall and the fact that we had to do a lot of mowing at one point, and then, of course, in August, we had kind of like low rainfall, so it, you know, it's very, very old. That's the way it elevated out. And then the expenses are also allocated either directly, so in other words, if there were direct mulching or direct expenses for, let's say, shrubbery removal, et cetera, those go directly into the, the particular SSA, and then common expenses, if you will, so fuel, lawnmower blades, uh, weed whipper parts, those all go, um, on a, uh, on a percentage basis as well.
May I ask, how many hours are estimated to care for that particular SSA number six?
Um, I'd have to look that up, I'm sorry, I don't have that information, I can get that for you at the next one.
Okay. That would be helpful so that we can compare the wages as it goes.
Well, it's gonna vary each and every year, but, um, I can tell you how many hours were spent this summer.
Okay.
I believe I can do that, yeah.
Okay. Same thing.
Uh-huh.
And number seven?
Alright. I apologize, um, can you see that? Alright. Um, SSA number seven is Andrew Hills, this is, um, one of our
This is a big one.
Problem child, if you will, um, and so this one's gonna take a little bit more time. Um, uh, in fiscal year twenty-one, we actually did nine-thousand-eight-hundred dollars worth of machine clearing, um, and hand clearing of
This is, uh, like, uh, so, I'm sorry, the subdivision off of Getzelman Road, past of, like, the Catholic Cemetery, there's a big pond along, uh, uh, Getzelman Road, that was, pond that was overtaken by a bunch of noxious, uh, weeds and trees and growth and that kind of stuff, and it had to be.
You want on the west side?
It's on, it's on the east, or the west side of the road.
The west side of the road.
On the south side of the subdivision, and then there's a pond up at the top of the subdivision, it's like actually within the subdivision itself.
Oak Hill, that's a
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yes.
Trail and that kind of stuff, and there was a, if you guys remember, there was some complaints when we were doing the work, uh, there was a lot of complaints that came down because people thought that those trees were supposed to be there, and, uh, you couldn't see Getzelman Road from the backside of people's homes, or you couldn't see people's homes from, you know, driving down Getzelman Road. That's how significant, uh, the growth was.
I'll be particularly honest, in my entire tenure, I've been here since two thousand and ten, um, there was not a single thing done to this, I, I don't know what happened, um, not a single maintenance other than the mowing part was done in this SSA in, in my entire town here, so until last year. So it was, it was significant, there were a lot of, um, as you mentioned, um, invasive tree species and, yes.
I didn't mean to cut you off, but I think that setting the stage for the increase, I haven't talked about the increase, might, might help to follow the conversation.
Yep.
I mean, could you give us the number of properties, like you have for the others, I'm sorry?
Um, oh, yes, there's, there are seventy-two in this.
Okay, thank you.
Alright. And so last year, we raised it five percent, this year, we're looking at raising it eight-hundred-and-fifty-two percent. So, um, as a point of reference, um, that the amount going from the, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar homeowner will go from ten dollars to about ninety-eight dollars.
Well, they have more than a two-hundred-thousand-dollar homeowner, there's not a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home in that subdivision. Yep, those, that subdivision's up over four.
Well, if you take ten thousand dollars and divide by seventy-two, um, yeah, that's, that's a giant.
About one-hundred-and-fifty-two.
So, when we did this with White Oak Ponds, where we raised it the first time, I believe, we talked to the board and stepped it, instead of increasing it substantially, realized that there was a burden on the village, but we didn't want to. Mr. Coe, you were on the board at the time. You remember that?
Yep.
Where we, we didn't, we, because it was a significant increase there too because of the lack of maintenance.
I, I can spread it out, but what I'm trying to do in showing the future years as well, we, we are so far behind, I mean, I, I'll gladly come back next time with some addition, with different numbers for you. Um, but as you can see,
Ten dollars.
Um, we have some ongoing things to do. Uh, we're still, uh, this, this spring, so right now, they do winter prep, it's called, uh, when the ground is frozen, but we actually in, uh, will be burning, um, the, the detention area there at, at an additional cost of seventy-two hundred dollars, so, you know, like, um, to Mr. Kelly's comment, we had, we started fiscal year twenty-one with a fifty-eight-hundred-dollar balance, and we're spending about a thousand dollars a year, you know, on mowing, and all of a sudden, it came to our attention that this needed some serious attention, and now we're, you know, we're really far behind, so, um, I, I can spread it out a little bit more, but, um, yeah, we'll see.
I know that, I know that we, we're far behind, and I know that we're in a perfect world, everybody would just be okay with it, but they're not going to.
Okay.
I mean, I understand that we have a certain responsibility, right, but
The question, the question is whether the board wants us to go negative in some of these fund balances and have the village finance them. Yeah, not in the past, but if that's a policy you want to.
No, it's not necessarily, it's not necessarily a policy, it's a matter of we were, like, to Laurie's point, to Lyons' point, we didn't do what we were supposed to do since two thousand and ten, which is what got us here. And so, I don't know how we account for that.
No, it's just, I'm not arguing the point there, I'm just, I'm just making a point that, uh, that's, that's why Laurie presented this away, because in the past, we've never gone negative in intentionally on any fund balances in, in the SSAs. But is that something the board wants to loosen up?
No, 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 no. So the only option is to, uh, maintain this till they run out of money and just walk away. If we don't raise it, just walk away.
I'm not suggesting that we not raise it, I suggest that we try to find a way to, like, some kind of middle ground, because
Eight-hundred-and-fifty-two percent ain't a whole lot of middle ground.
That's true.
Eight-hundred percent, there's no middle ground in eight-hundred percent.
No.
Well, I, I guess, to what President Ari was saying and what Ms. Lyons was saying earlier, this increase is a result of the village over time not doing what it needed to do to maintain that property, not because the residents didn't maintain it, or a homeowner association didn't maintain it, is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Yes.
So.
And there was also now
Looking, so now we're looking to raise taxes through the SSA on the residents because the village didn't maintain it. Wouldn't this be on the village and therefore couldn't we look at this as a capital expenditure to get to spend out of capital expenditure funds to fix this problem that the village didn't maintain rather than taxing the residents in that community?
Just to Kelly, what I would suggest, might want to just consider the fact that during all those years when we weren't doing properly maintenance, they were not being taxed for it either.
It doesn't, that doesn't.
That, that, sorry, my question was, could this come out of the capital expenditure to fix this property?
I, I think we have to look into that because it's a question of whether we can use general village revenue on a specific SSA, the purpose of an SSA is that it supports itself financially and maintains its own, uh, cost. So to use village funds for an SSA, um, that's something I think we'd have to look into. And whether or not we get, I mean, we're not talking about a lot of money in all of these SSAs, really. Um, but that, that's a, a principle, trustee Kelly, that we would be, we'd have to look into.
And taxes are going from ten dollars to a hundred and fifty?
To, well, i- if it were a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house, which it's not, right? But let's tell
Let's double it. Hang on, hang on, hang on, I, what, no, I know, I deserve the answer, please.
Ninety-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. It's on, it's on the piece of paper.
Ninety-seven dollars?
And fifty-two cents.
I don't have a good enough glasses.
Yeah, sorry.
No, but, but to be fair, to double it, to represent the actual homes that are there, it's at, from twenty dollars to what?
Two hundred.
So, that, that's, Mr. Coe, that's what I was getting.
Two hundred a year?
At least.
At least, because the homes over there are more than two-hundred-and-fifty grand.
Boom, give him something else.
Okay.
Two hundred bucks is, is nothing there, because it's gonna drop, correct? Eventually?
No, it keeps going up.
At twenty-six and twenty.
Well, it goes from eight-hundred-and-twenty-five percent down to twenty-five percent.
But look at the totals from the bottom.
This year twenty-seven, it's two-hundred and one, to make it four hundred.
Right there.
So what we did too is, one of the biggest expenses is that machine clearing, and, um, so, you know, if it's properly maintained, burned, um, sprayed, that machine clearing may not be, you know, I have it out six years. It may, it may be, you know, I've been here ten years, it may be another ten years, it may be fifteen years, but it's been in place for a long time and it hasn't been maintained, so it may actually last longer than that.
Okay.
We learned eight of this tonight specifically because we knew this was gonna be painful, this is the first year we've actually tried to catch up. Um, if you recall, two years ago, we had, we'd been so far behind, hardly any deposits had been maintained, we brought them again, too, they gave, gave us a lot of good information. Now, this is the first year we've actually, Laurie and they worked together to work out this multi-year plan. But, um, we're not voting on it tonight, so take any suggestions you have, but we do have to catch this up, it's not something we need to put off.
Okay, Ms. Lyons, what about number eight?
Alright.
Wow. That time that he'll take a good one.
Number eight is um, so we're actually, uh, we've produced this over the last couple of years, my proposal is a decrease, uh, kind of, uh, weirded this out, uh, four-thousand-dollar levy and decrease of twenty-two percent.
Then how many properties is this?
Um, SSA number eight is Um, SSA number eight is forty-three properties.
Can you give me some streets?
Um, Hampshire Hills is.
They're all behind the Dunkin' Donuts?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
They're just north of the property we were talking about.
So.
North.
North.
South.
Okay, number ten.
All right, number ten is another property on White Oak Ponds. So um, last year we increased the levy by five percent. This year I propose increasing it by fifty percent. Um, you'll see that we've done some clearing in the past of, in that.
Where?
So specifically.
Nothing's been done from Jake to my back door. Nothing's been cleared. The only thing that's been cleared is when I went down there with the mower.
There was stuff across from the east side of the street.
Okay, I don't have this like in your packet, but this is White Oak Pond.
Yeah, that's White Oak Pond.
And the east side, that big pond.
Across, remember when they're across.
So unit one, which is the big pond. Do you see unit one on there, Toby?
Yeah.
That one in February of two thousand and twenty-one, that received sixty-two hundred dollars of selected machine and hand clearing. Um, removing brush and small trees throughout the buffer.
That, yeah.
That's across the street from it. And then they're gnarled all the trees and left them.
Yeah. Wasn't that around the same time we also did the, the one on White Oak, over, over on, oh, what's that, Hampshire Hills? We did, we did it in a very similar time span because I remember we were getting calls about this like three years ago.
Hampshire Hills was God, February second or third and eighth.
Yeah, so it was all within the same time span that they were going nuts and all the residents were like thinking we were being anti-environment. We might as well put asphalt trucks out there.
So, and then let's keep going. Unit number two? Keep it, Toby, uh, keep it. Um, unit number two. That one received machine clearing in March of two thousand and twenty. Um.
Yes.
And then in June of two thousand and twenty, there was herbicide applied to target woody sprouts. In August of two thousand and twenty, it received additional herbicides targeting cattails and. Armites.
That's it.
Um, in uh, June of two thousand and twenty-one. There was also herbicide applied in both June and July of that time. Then unit number three. That also received machine clearing um in February of two thousand and twenty on the tenth, eleventh, twelfth and fifteenth. And then uh, unit eight, oh, I'm not sure why they're not numbered sequentially. That one has not had any work done in it. For this point. And with respect to the work that's being planned, we continue to um. Challenge McGinty to uh, reduce costs. You know, they want to apply herbicides like a lot. And we're trying to take over some of that work in-house. Um, with our individuals that have pesticide licenses, there's special aquatic licensing required. But um, you know, we're hoping to, to save some money doing that. Um. So that's keep in mind. As far as White Oak Ponds and what's planned for um, this year. Uh, fiscal year twenty, and what I'm talking about this year, fiscal year twenty-three, we're going to be applying some herbicides. Um, in the spring of twenty-two, that will happen. That's in your thing, that's in yellow. We're going to be burning uh, unit pond number two. And. That's.
Going to.
Yep, that's six thousand dollars done. Yep. So that's gonna be done in the spring.
I, I have no problem with the increase. It's just when I'm licensed, I'm, I'm licensed by the Department of. For herbicide, water, everything. Somebody needs to watch these guys because they're not doing a job. They're not killing nothing. They've killed the cattails off of Jake. That's it. That's all they've done. They did an initial mowing a couple of years ago, all the, all the way around and around the pond and down. The stuff's that thick now. It's, it's all grown back.
All those cattails off of Jake are, they're still there.
Yeah, they're there.
You know, I, I think it's great, but, but uh, after looking, after hearing you read off all the herbicide sprays. They haven't done their job.
Well, um, data's out there mostly, not here, so I think one time we did meet you out there with McGinty and David. We should probably do that again the next time. I'll have David give you all and we'll get together again next time.
I, I thought when we talked about this one a couple of. Two years ago, maybe, uh, maybe it was when you first came on board, Jim, maybe a year and a half ago. Year ago, um, it was a, it planned to increase over like two years and then drop it back down to normal. Where, where it used to be. Correct me if I'm wrong with that, I don't know. Well, you said you were on the board.
So we talked about a, a significant increase for this.
For two years.
Coming year. Well, um.
Well, we talked, I, I thought we talked about a significant increase to get this area under control for two years and then. Bring it back down to reality where it was prior to the increase. I thought we did. I, I don't know.
We may have discussed that, but we've learned a lot about these ponds in the last two years and it needs to be done.
Okay. Well, I think that that's why I brought up the like step conversation and equalizing because I remember we talked about something very similar to. We, we had some way of trying to figure out a way to.
To get out of control.
Easier for the residents as well.
Right.
All right, you guys have done a great job. Don't, don't get anybody wrong.
Right, right.
But I don't think McGinty's really uh, really done a bang-up job.
Okay.
We'll get them out here.
But, yeah, they're shooting in the dark. But let me ask one question for anybody here. With the White Oak Ponds, and I'm sure there's other ones, that's one of our central drainage systems in the village. That doesn't the engineering firm for our village ever, they never came to us and said, hey. Your, the, the main drain for your whole thing's all screwed up. It, that's.
No.
Okay.
Well, they looked at those pretty significantly when we were going through Highland. It is, and so, and so they pointed problems out with it then. But up until that point, we had never engaged them to look at anything because there wasn't an issue for them to look at. I mean, I, if I'm not mis, you know, understanding what had happened, but. The EEI doesn't go around looking for problems within the village unless we ask it.
Take it.
Or, no, you're not, it's not a college. You have to say that that's, that's why they don't do it. We don't have a village engineer. We, someday maybe we will have one that drives around the village on a regular, but these guys are patients also, for lack of a better term.
On the SSA number eleven, Hampshire Highlands. Um, this particular uh. SSA involves two hundred and twenty properties. Um, we reduced the SSA levy last year by um, eighteen percent and we're looking at reducing it again. Um, and Chief can speak to this. This, this one probably came to our attention first as far as needing significant work. And um, over time, their SSA levy was very little and then zoomed up. So um, we're bringing that back um, because we are um, continuing to do ongoing maintenance. Um, we do expect to burn this spring. Um, and then continue to apply the herb, herbicide sprays. Um, and, and aquatic uh, herbicides, so. Um, this one is proposed to reduce to ten thousand dollars. They have a significant fund balance here. Um, so that's a reduction of thirty-three percent compared to last year.
Is this the, is the one pond?
It says two.
Also century behind James?
There are two ponds.
Oh, there are two.
Is it, is the second one behind James Ford?
It's way up at the top.
Okay, where's the other pond to the two?
The big one down here that's behind the chief's house on Bailey and then this one is up by.
James.
Uh.
What's behind you?
Channing.
Yeah.
It's behind James. Yeah, Chris Channing, that ends right there.
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. That's where we get out of.
Not James, Karen. It's like Karen and Judy, right?
A little further down or it makes sense.
It's James. It's across the street from my house.
Oh, yes, yeah. Oh, oh, I see. Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I'm assuming.
Can you say exchange one more time?
Yeah, sure. Um, I'm assuming that, that's going down because we have an increased number of properties that are owned now. As opposed to we, we lost that we had during the last ten years.
No, um, so those, those property owners would have paid on a fair market value basis, so, yes, I mean, there's.
There are more people paying in.
Um.
With improved properties.
With improved properties because they were empty lots for many years.
Those people wouldn't pay their fair share. So those people that have owned their homes for a really long time paid more. Because there were less, um, you know, little, little of park, fair market value in total overall. So it, um, the, the dollar amount is only going down not because, this is not on a, this is not on. Uh, you know, like a per-home basis. It's on a fair market value basis, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I mean, in order to keep the fund at a particular amount.
We're with a way of kind of letting it go up and down. We'll watch it. If we can reduce it more, we will.
Okay. And is it, as I'm looking at fiscal year twenty-seven, I noticed that we're getting kind of close to what we would be spending there. I'm assuming that we.
So, um, if you, if you look at fiscal year twenty-six, we take a big hit in some uh, machine clearing. That may not, again, may not be necessary. We will evaluate that as we get closer, but yep, um.
Okay.
Yep. I, I think it's better to kind of meter it out as we talked about, rather than say, oh, my gosh, we machine cleared last year, you're gonna do that.
Right.
Um, you know, we have to kind of try to meter it out for people.
Yeah, if we can make it more income out, it's a little easier as well. So, got it.
Okay. Onto the next one. SSA number twelve is Hampshire Meadows. Um, this particular one, uh, we decreased uh, last year. However, with the wages and benefits, um, I would like to increase it back again. Uh, it's, uh, it's a thirty-six percent increase, but again, looking at the fair market value calculation. Um, you know, assuming the EIB stays the same, the, the rate is such that it will go up to a hundred dollars. So I propose a levy of fifty-seven hundred dollars for this one.
And how many properties is that?
Um, Hampshire Meadows includes a hundred and seventeen properties.
Now, can you tell us where about?
Um, Hampshire Meadows is, um. Let me see, Hampshire Meadows is right, that Hampshire Fields and then Hampshire Meadows, correct? So it is to the, to the west, thank you, of, of, so south of seventy-two. Did you get it?
Is that very, very? Very green.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. Any questions with that one? This one is Lincoln Crossing. That's a thing of a big theme. Um, this is kind of a unique one. Um, we did levy uh, last year. We've done some significant work. Because the homeowners association was not doing it. Um, this year I actually propose not to levy at all. Uh, the homeowners association has a plan and has followed through on their plan. We do have fund balance, you know, eventually if we feel comfortable, we can return some of that to the homeowners association to care for these ponds. Um, but at this point, um, zero levy, just kind of keeping that fund balance on hand in case. They failed to do what they did um, previously and we had stepped in. This is a backup and we had to step in on an emergency basis.
This was the one that it is their responsibility.
It is. That's for us.
And we, Jay and I have both had conversations with the homeowners association on multiple uh, times. As has Mr. Serret in there. Miss, Miss Lyons says that they're really committed to doing this. That's not a lie. They're really committed to writing this.
We properly.
Now, I'm certainly not, not saying.
Five hundred and fifty-nine properties in her wood.
I, I want to clarify in this lines. I'm not assuming that you lie in any fashion.
I'm upset.
No, I'm just saying that they, they feel very strongly that they, they're going to take that.
Okay.
All right, that's the last one that we um, intend to make a levy for or a, you know, a change from the previous year, so.
I don't think that we've heard enough from you up to nineteen.
I'm sorry.
Financial report.
Any questions about the financial report tonight? Just kidding.
Oh. So are we right on the committees?
Okay.
Okay.
Not committees, but reports.
Okay.
If you'd like, we can go. Chief, would you like to go next? Why don't you go next? Your incident report, get a little aperitif.
I mean, you see your packet, the incident report over the month of October, traffic seems to be trending down a little bit. Um. Still handling a couple of big calls that were still kind of working on investigations. Other than that, uh, pretty much standard stuff, um, nothing. You can report. We're working with the uh, with the union on better schedules for the guys. Uh, on, on recruitment and retention issues. Um, and I think that we're going to be trying a few other newer things to make them happy and uh. Have an agreement between the village and the uh, FOP. Uh, to go outside the contract and as long as it doesn't impact us financially, we're gonna try it. Other than that, that's pretty much about it. Any questions?
Tim, would you please say your engineering report?
For you.
Okay, sorry about that. Um. So just a couple of things to point out, the Route seventy-two. Uh, water main repair project, our contractor had some scheduling issues, but. We're on track now. We had a very productive pre-construction meeting with uh, Mark and Dave at Public Works. Yesterday, and you'll see some activity starting next week with locates and staking and then. Uh, they'll start on the twenty-ninth with uh, the connection to the existing water main and they'll have the. Uh, water main completed and the services switched over uh, by December tenth. And if, otherwise, if there's any questions on any, uh, any of the other items, I'd be happy to answer them.
Hey, Lori, you're up again.
All right.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you. With respect to our financial report, uh, we are six months through the fiscal year. And so therefore we have some results um, as of October thirty-first. Um, as far as uh, revenue, the only uh, state shared uh, revenue in our general fund that is lagging behind my projections. Is use tax. Um, this is taxes received on uh, things such as uh. Proper uh, partnership tax returns and those types of things. Um, so uh, it is lagging uh, hopefully to be restored, I guess. That's the best I can say. Uh, with respect to other taxes. Um, and other fee revenue, uh, everything but fines, fees and reports. Um, are pretty much on track. Uh, utility taxes are down. Um, mostly on the telecom side, however, we're moving into the winter season, so I'm hoping we see a resurgence of uh, some of our. Uh, Exelon or ComEd and uh, my core taxes, so. Don't steal too roughly about that right now. Um, hoeing fees, I'm not sure what happened to my line there, um, but that is going strong, um, almost uh.
um, but that is going strong, um, almost, uh, ninety percent of budget, not a huge dollar amount, but something that, um, looks really good. Um, one thing I want to point out and was added to the list this time is public use transition fees. Uh, our home permits are down, um, compared to projection. So, uh, public use transition fees are actually operating expenses, um, that are received at the time of billing permitting. So, um, that is down, um, only at less than thirty percent at the present time.
Let you briefly what those intended for, because I can't trust the Florida ads about that revenue and how we're going to the streets.
Yeah, so, so a public use transition fees are, are meant to kind of cover the gap when we're, um, doing public services in the general fund, whether it be police protection, street, uh, issues, um, between when the home is permitted and we actually start receiving, uh, property taxes at, at the home's value rather than just the loan value.
Mr. Speaker, this is what you, you were asking earlier, I think, about Dave about we have new subdivisions, we have new services, so these transition fees help us pay those services and stuff we start collecting, uh, property taxes, which probably too much.
Yeah, my question at that time was specifically about the routes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That was, uh, but yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep, and, um, just to go a little bit further on the new home permitting, um, when Josh gives you a report on his home, new home permits, it's on an application basis and when I give you, um, reports on them, it's actually when the permit is issued. So there's a timing thing. If he says we have ten in this month, hopefully they all get paid for in the following month or, you know, something like that. So there is some timing issues with respect to that. Um, and so, uh, this year to date, we've had seventeen new home permits paid for, uh, which is only just, just shy of thirty one percent of, uh, what's projected, um, having fifty five new homes in the budget. Um, we have, uh, received, uh, seven distributions of property taxes as of October thirty first and the tax sale was held earlier this month, I believe on November second. So we are expected, it was supposed to be distributed on November seventeen, but I don't believe it from our bank account just yet. Um, I think we received, our final distribution was about ten thousand dollars, so it was, it was pretty nominal, but, um, we have received, um, just over budget and I always like nap it down just a little bit to make sure that we do receive a hundred percent of budget on, uh, on the property taxes. So we will make budget on that. Um, with respect to accounts looking a little out of whack, uh, with respect to, um, our six month into the final or into the fiscal year, building maintenance, we have completed the renovations to Village Hall that's included in that category. So the outside of the building, um, we are, we have not yet paid for the windows that are upstairs that were new as well as the painting in the front door. So, um, we will, uh, be over budget in this particular area, but at least, um, our building is, uh, sound, secure and.
And we don't have birds living in the walls.
The birds are on the walls and we did wait until the birds were hatched and moved out before it was raining. Um, admin meals and travel is, uh, going to exceed budget guaranteed this year. Um, we're starting to do a little bit more travel, going to conferences, um, attending webinars and those types of things for, um, training purposes, so. Um, and then, uh, printing, advertising and forms continues to stay on there. This is mainly due to, um, not budgeting for the, uh, newsletter that's being placed in the large. Um, let's see, anything else hit the line this particular time? Um, I think, uh, the only other thing I think that stands out to me was the street tree removal. Um, it's kind of a shot in the dark with the budget for that. Um, we have to take down dangerous trees that are on the pathway as required. So, um, I'm, I'm afraid we're gonna, we'll definitely be over budgeting in that area. And then, as we know, we did do the settlement with the, um, the bank with respect to the Boba's. So to the extent we had recorded a receivable, um, thinking that a hundred percent of the lead would be collected and it wasn't, so that will be expensed on this particular fiscal year as well. Um, with respect to water and sewagees, um, are, we're right on target, um, at fifty four and fifty two percent respectively, uh, of revenue. And then, um, it, with, it's, uh, with respect to expenses, uh, water system maintenance is, uh, greater than, uh, expected. We did some horse trading, if you will, between line items and, uh, this one is over because of Cameron Road made water main replacements in that cul-de-sac that was in, um, leaking very badly. So hopefully that will correct some of our water loss, uh, problems. And then, um, engineering is nearing the, uh, budget of fifty five thousand dollars. And we talked about the gasoline and oil situation. We're definitely going to be over budget because we did not budget for the, uh, giant collection of grease that, uh, is now on hand, hidden inventory, if you will. So, um, any questions with respect to the financial report?
I appreciate you compiling it for us.
Thank you.
Makes a big difference, especially as it comes to us making decisions at the board level, to have an understanding of the financial.
And with that, Mr. Mayor, I guess it's time for us to talk about, to present, you would ask a motion to approve the November eighteen, twenty twenty one accounts payable to personnel.
So this is the personnel. Does anyone have any question? And I will entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable, the amount of two hundred and forty one dollars and thirty cents, uh, to be paid on or before November twenty fourth and eighteen. So. Very good. Questions, Thomas? Call, call, vote.
Mr. Coach.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Voter.
Hi.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
Ms. Paul Stine.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Motion says six zero.
All right, next, uh, is the big one. Then, may I have any questions about the big one?
I have one comment to let you know about. Um, you'll note that there is a small payment, um, to Heartland Bank and Trust. That is for the debt certificates, our first interest payment on the debt certificates. Um, the timing is such that we had to get this approved, but they had not issued us a bill. So I, I reached out to, um, uh, the loan representative that helped us with these debt certificates and he said to me, he said, I think that this is right. It's not coming out of our system, but it didn't match the debt schedule. It's actually in the bond certificate or the debt certificate, uh, loan documents. And so therefore this amount is the amount that's in the loan certificates, which is slightly higher than what he gave to me. So when we actually get the bill, I might let you know at the next meeting that we didn't actually pay this. We paid a little bit less, so just to let you know. We're gonna hold a check essentially until you get the actual debt, but it's due before our next board meetings.
So I can still use the amount that's listed.
Yes.
Account payable.
Yep. You're gonna authorize that and we're just not gonna pay it till we know for sure.
Well, you take that.
Yeah, I hope so.
Can I ask about the?
No.
Thank you.
No, thanks.
The Amazon Capital Services cons, is that for the street department?
It is, yes. So, um, last, a couple of years ago, maybe the, um, utility department, they have more people that live out outside of town. They have obtained some tax and these are for the street department personnel that may, um, you know, take their break.
Right.
Actually.
That's great. That's great.
Are they comfortable?
It'd be better to put them up to hotel, but, you know.
You can't go there.
That'll work.
Don't take your wheels off the truck. Anyone else?
Have you seen it? Has someone drawn it or?
Yeah.
He said, no.
Wow.
No.
He's actually hurt for a minute.
He opened the door.
I know, I saw it opening. Right, stand right in.
Any other questions or funny jokes or breakdowns or anything?
Along with that was the Flood's Royal Flush, um, for the port-a-potty. Was that for the mistletoe market?
That is actually, um, that's for the street department as well. They are redoing their bathrooms that are in the street garage and so they had to have a port-a-potty when the, when the actual bathrooms were out of service.
And Flood's Charging, that's good.
This was actually a different company, so.
That is Flood Brother.
That's Flood Brother.
I didn't, I didn't ask them for a, I didn't know about it. I didn't ask them for it. It wasn't, it's not in our contract. Uh, they agreed to community events.
Sounds true.
Without a pow, if you have any community events.
How much was, how much you built?
Three hundred.
Really? Really? The guys needed, they had, they didn't have a working bathroom.
I'm not, I'm just, I don't care.
You three hundred and one was fine.
They could have waited some more.
Don't get it.
All right. I will entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable, uh, the amount of two hundred and fifty two thousand, seventy eight dollars and forty seven cents on, uh, to be paid on or before eleven twenty four. So who's? The other question, vocal. Okay, thank you. She called it.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
Ms. Paul Stine. Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Mr. Coach.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Ford, Mr. Horace.
Hi.
All right, now to everybody's favorite commission, the business development one. And I only said that because Mr. Rock is here and then one of them. Because if everybody likes the BDC, they won't like. Hold on, how that age here? Mr. Kelly, you're up.
Uh, I will defer to Mr. Hedges as I was unable to attend the last BDC miss, meeting. Mr. Hedges, any update from that meeting?
Mostly, for the most part, we talked about, um, Streetscape and, uh, we spoke at boarding about a month ago about Streetscape, uh, the possibility of applying for another rebuild Illinois grant, Streetscape two point O. We went through an exercise and activity for several weeks. Josh and I worked with, uh, well, mostly with the numbers and with Freddie and eventually came to the conclusion that we did not think, that the mayor also didn't think that we would be successful, uh, in applying for an additional half million dollar grant for Streetscape. So we recommended, well, the BDC didn't take any action, but we told them that we would not be applying for additional funding. Uh, two reasons. One is that we didn't think, we, we spent probably fifteen thousand dollars on the application and we gave ourselves maybe a fifty percent chance of getting it. Um, and secondly, we figured that we, after next summer is finished, uh, we probably will have our downtown businesses. We'll probably be ready for a break and want another project coming this year later. So, uh, that's, that was, that was the major topic. We did also talk about some new facade improvement grants that we think will be coming forward. Uh, there's, uh, we talked a little bit about the Dollar Store, which is now listed on the market for the first time finally. And , uh, we, I did receive a call from an interested buyer, uh, at least for a portion of it. So that's the most part. Um, Karen Trask reported on the ambassador program and, uh, that's, those are the highlights for the BDC.
Public Relations?
I'll report at this time.
I have something for Public Relations. Uh, we can talk about this in a new business standpoint. If Public Works.
My entire report was on snow removal, so.
Good job.
We'll, we'll. Good job on that PowerPoint.
Moving on. Can you hear it again?
Budget.
No, no formal report.
New business or other announcements?
Yes, uh, we've had some incidents with, at the schools, so I'd like to thank Chief Thompson and the entire police department for keeping our kids safe. Nice job. Um, and happy Thanksgiving coming up.
You say?
I, I have a question. This might be for our village banter. Seeing as how we've got, uh, four trees sitting here, uh, with all these copies, has the village considered maybe a tablet for each board member to stay here to be used for board meetings only? So that we can do everything electronic, right? Because this had to take somebody some time.
No, it does.
And then it takes a lot of ink and then when the printer breaks down, we gotta pay for it, yada, yada, goes on and on and on. So most villages have switched over to electronic.
Yeah, that's bad. So, back in two thousand, like, fourteen, when I was a young trustee, I did a cost analysis at the time of how much money do we spend on printing board packets and how much donor do we spend and stuff? And then I ran the number of iPad, they were iPads at the time, because that was a big thing back then, right? And it was pretty close, but the board at the time was a lot less technology proficient. I, I gotta be careful what I say because last time I said something, Jay gave me a hard time about the, you know, system. And so, and so, uh, they were less, they were not as proficient in technology and that kind of thing. So I really, there was, at the time, we were printing two board packets a month for every board member in color and then was any additional handouts and that kind of stuff that came with it. And there was a pretty substantial number and it was pretty close at the time, even with iPads. So, I mean, I, I think that it might be a, uh, spot savings for the village if we look into it at some point.
Certainly we can get any attention from staff. I know Linda and Josh are already looking to do that, but it's a question of whether all of you like electronics or not.
So the, the one thing I would say though, if we're gonna go down this avenue, you gotta get something with a pen because we all write, they all want to highlight like as they read their packet and that kind of stuff. So they would need to be able, they would need a device that they can touch and highlight and mark up the time. Otherwise, otherwise it'll be ineffective.
I'm just asking if everybody's ready for electronics or not.
Oh, this is crazy.
Yeah.
Well, I like my teeth. I mean, I don't know. I mean, I do. I flip between pages and I feel more comfortable doing that. I mean, but I, I do understand it. The packets are, have not been this large.
But you know what? If any, if, if, if the rest of them want electronic, you can have paper. I, I don't want paper because, to be frank, I'll save a few pages. The rest of it's gone.
Yep.
So we just wasted a lot of resources and time that Linda could be doing something else. But if you, if you get the proper piece, it'll last for a decade. All you're doing is putting the, the monthly minutes on it. It can last for all the next trustees over and over again.
There's, there's, there's certainly a lot of benefit to it because, I mean, we have trouble with communication sometimes, um, not so much with this board, but in previous boards where we send emails out and certain people had trouble getting into their email and that kind of stuff. So if you gave everybody a tablet that was pre-populated with their email account set up and that kind of stuff, that would ensure that at least you get into the habit as an elected official.
And then, and then if somebody gets FOIA'd, they can take that unit. That's why I won't bring mine because if I intermingle and it gets FOIA'd, they take your, your computer away.
I think it's worth investigating. I don't know that we can afford it.
Well, if you can, you, you know better than I do what type of tablet it would be if you let, let me know, we'll look at it.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, absolutely.
Tap it on the white.
A little earlier.
That's something that's so, as far as getting your packets earlier, that's something that, that we've talked about and they've got, you know, Mr. Hedges has gotten to the point where he sends a preliminary agenda to me and on Friday afternoons usually. Um, we, we wanted to get the process down before we started sending preliminary, uh, agendas to the rest of the board. But as far as packets, but I mean, that's something I've challenged Jay and, and the staff since I got on because I, I agree with you, especially when you get three hundred and sixty one pages. But at that same time, that's why, one of the reasons that we now send communication prior to, like, way in advance about specific topics. So at least there's background. So when you're hit with an agenda that's three hundred and sixty one pages, you're not seeing it for the first time. And so that, I mean, that's just.
Nice job, by the way.
Um, and we did, this is the first all you just put it up. Uh, you had the ability to pull it through it, but we haven't figured out how to go back yet. At least we're getting from the, from that agenda to the, each item on the panel electronically. Um, I forgot what I was gonna say. What's that?
Get it, get it.
Oh, yeah. Uh, for example, we had a planning commission last month, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and so we had to get his minutes prepared and then do the packet and get it to us and then get him reproduced. And so it, it takes a while to put it together and it's, it's getting information from other people. It doesn't, it takes, Josh put the package together this week. I did it last week. Um, it takes maybe an hour and a half to put the packet together. Maybe not even that long. It's just getting all the documents from everybody. It takes time. And I've been trying to get them in on Fridays and it just doesn't work.
The only reason I ask is that I think almost all of us work a full-time job and this, getting this, um, I did come on Tuesday after work, but that door was locked, so I didn't have access to it until midday Wednesday and only because I took a half day so I could come and get it.
Somebody must have come in here and locked the door because I left it open.
Okay, well, I'm just letting you know.
So what, what door was that?
This door right here.
So if that ever happens again.
Yeah.
We have a side door. You can use your code on the side door.
Or the back door.
Or the back door, let yourself in and then come into the border. So if that, I'm just saying, if that ever happens again.
Yeah, it was.
And it's ha, and it's happened to me before. That's how I know this.
Okay.
So like, that door will unlock. So like that door will unlock from the side. Our codes to get in the front door will work on the back door and the side door. If you find that that happens, it's not ideal, right? But come in the side door or the back door, just like you would the front, let yourself in.
But if the packets in the clerk's office, that's.
That I can't help you with.
I know. So I mean, that, that's usually where you need it.
But thanks, John. Nice job by our attorney for putting the housing together.
We got it. Yes.
Jay for keeping stuff running straight. Josh, Lori for putting all the letter, uh numbers together. Thank you.
And Brian for being so handsome.
Who? We call.
Sheep. The sheep. Everyone.
You're feeling brandished.
I do. I think we should have one more vote here. So the mayor and I do have a competition.
Yeah, yeah. This is, this is looking way better than mine.
Any votes yet?
We're gonna be all, uh yours looks a lot better now than it did two weeks.
Thanks.
It was nice. You now look respectable. Then you were.
Two weeks.
Notice that, notice that. No, no, I'm not giving this a compliment.
Yeah, so a, a couple, a couple of things. December eleventh is coming. Uh our cruise director is uh, is really latched onto this. Um we're, we've sent emails out to people that we invited in the past to participate in the parade. We do have people signing up, so it's exciting. Um, we're gonna use the same round except we're gonna do it backwards. So last year, last year we did State Street last. This year we wanna do State Street first.
Do they still put a tree out here?
We're working through that. I talked with Mr. Starrett tonight. We do, that resident wants to donate this tree. We're trying to find power, right? So we're gonna, it's either gonna end up, um it, it's gonna end up in front of James Motors one way or another. We talked to them. Um and so Dave had some concerns about putting it in the street that I think we addressed tonight. But I think it might end up being, because that's a large parking area right underneath their Chrysler sign there. It might end up there, which is closer proximity to the village hall, and then they've got power there and it'll be downtown. So it, and I think that that's, that's kind of where they're leaning, but it may end up on the site where the clock is supposed to go as well, because then it won't be on the street. Dave has some concerns with it being on the street. I understand.
Who's gonna hit a twenty-five foot lit up tree?
I, I understand that, but I'm also not, I'm also.
Snow removal.
I'm also not gonna push back on Dave because Dave knows what he's doing, you know? So like, I, I don't wanna be, I just don't wanna be that guy. So if he, if he thinks it, if he thinks it's gonna be safe, you know, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna fight him. He knows who's talking.
Okay.
Um, Santa letters, uh we're gonna be sending Santa letters here soon. Uh.
We have the mailbox, right? And did the uh Basset people return all the uh stuff they borrowed from upstairs?
Haven't seen it.
Yeah, they have not. The North Pole sign that was made, all the ornaments that we got upstairs were all handmade. See, this is second year now. She's taking them, not returning them.
Yeah, well, we'll uh figure that out. I'll set the cruise director loose on her. Um, and then one other thing that uh Mr. Hedges and I had talked about um in this kind of a, a unique subject, right? So we all monitor social media and it has a impact on the village, right? It's a way that our residents contact whoever, right? We have the official channel, which is the Village of Hampshire Facebook page, Instagram page, whatever. We always try to direct people back to our official website and that kind of stuff, but no matter how many times you lead a horse to water, um you can't force them to drink, right? So that being said, there's many of us that, myself is probably the word, like, I don't know, quote unquote worst offender, if you will. Not from Jay, that's just I'm saying, that's my term. Sometimes we'll answer a, a question on, on like a community page or something or, or, and it has an impact on the village staff. And by that, I mean, there was a particular situation a few weeks ago where there was an, uh, an allegation made that the people at the village hall aren't picking up phones. When there was no pace, there was no evidence based on that. I picked up the phone. I happened to see it. It's not like I live on this thing, but I happened to see it. And I called the village hall. Of course, everybody answered like they were supposed to and all this other stuff. So then I pushed back on the resident and I said, hey, you know, um, the, hey, you, you know, what number did you call? Did you call the main number and stuff? And then, of course, no. Because it's a lot easier for people to make allegations on Facebook and so on. I just, I just wanted to say that it's not my expectation that the village staff monitor those interactions at all. Okay? It's not my expectation and I would hope that the board would back this. I mean, the village staff has things that they need to do for their job on a regular basis. Facebook is not one of those things. You know, and just because we have interactions, like in this particular situation with a resident or something, just because one of us responds to a situation doesn't mean that we automatically are going to assume one way or another that the people that are doing their job, doing the job, are not doing the job that they're supposed to. It's no different than snow removal posts and stuff like that or, you know, the, the people in Hampshire, I'm not picking on snowplow drivers, but that season's coming, okay? So they, all of a sudden.
Fix him.
All, all of, all of a sudden, you know, the snowplow drivers in Hampshire don't know how to drive and they're knocking over my mailbox when, you know, it might have been too close to the street, as we learned tonight. You know, that kind of thing. I just wanna put it out there and I, and I hope that the board backs me that it's not the village's fault, the, the staff's responsibility to be monitoring or doing their jobs based on power interaction on social media. I agree. I think that that's important for me to say and I think it's important for the board to back. That's a conversation that Jay and I had and I wanna make that public. And we're, there's, I'm gonna be crafting an email that I'm going to send to Jay. I can send to you guys too, if you want to read it before it goes out. But I, I want the staff to know that social media is not their responsibility. Social media plays an integral part in what we do. It's no different than walking up and down the street and having a conversation with residents. But you know, again, it's not one of these things, like when you have a conversation with a resident and it's low regarding, it's not for everybody else to see. Some people aren't comfortable coming up to you in person and so they all you own on Facebook and whatever it is they do. And so I thought that that was important, so I'm gonna bring that up. Anybody have anything they would like to add, conversation, question?
Thank you for that, Mr. Herr.
It causes problems sometimes because people read this stuff and they think, oh man, the new mayor thinks that I'm not answering the phone. Or, or, oh man, the new mayor is thinking that we don't want to drive the snowplow trucks or we're not, you know, or the cops are, you know, creeping up on people or where, you know. That's, and I don't want that to be. I just don't want that to be the case. I don't want that to be, I just want it to be our policy. So other than that, that's what I got. If anybody else has anything, now's their time to speak on any subject or I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I know.
I just wanted to say one thing. Last Saturday, we attended, several of us attended at the fire department. A great presentation from the fire department. I now have a better insight to um what they do besides just putting out fires. Very informative and well done.
Yeah, it was a good time.
Three hour, three hour.
It was longer than that.
Three hour, three and a half hours and, but you walked out there, really understood what they do and.
We got there at nine o'clock. We got, we got there at nine o'clock. We didn't get out till one.
Heat block.
I, no, they kept ripping on us too. All right, so now we gotta go into executive session, so I can't, well, so I, I guess, I guess we're gonna do that now.
Yeah, we're really going to executive?
It'll be really quick.
Yeah, but yeah, I'm gonna need a minute or two. I'm gonna go over there.
All right, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session under two C twenty-one review of executive session minutes, but I'll give a five minute break.
Soon.
Second. Ball call vote, call vote, you first?
Bill B.
I?
I.
Okay.
This is too much. Break it down.